We're not in any priority order, just saying that these are the roads you should look at for the first year.
That's correct, Counselor. They're not in, you don't necessarily have to follow them in that exact order. Those are just a group of roads that we recommend programming for that.
The question I'm trying to get to is the safety hazard. Let's say you have a road out there that is really in bad shape and it's a little hazardous for driving and too many potholes, kids on bicycles, especially at night could run into one and flip over, have an accident. How much emphasis do you guys place on the pavement condition plus safety?
Sure. Well, a roadway that is failed means that it has structural problems, which means that it very likely has potholes, uneven surfaces, or alligator cracking that might be tripping hazards for people crossing the road and things like that. Now, there are instances where, for example, you might have a road that had really severe potholing and you went back and filled in the potholes with some cold mixed asphalt or something that is a patch. That does not raise the condition of the road in our assessment. It's still a failed road because the pothole is there. And so, I don't know if that fully answers your question, but the hazard is still there and so the road remains a failed road.
So it'll be basically up to our crew here on staff to go out and look at roads and assess which may be a little bit more hazardous than others and work on for it.
And if you mean deciding between roads that are in the same year, yes, there's some discretion there as to... And same thing if you have a year where you're only in town with three hundred thousand, well, there are some decisions to be made as to which roads to delay. And yes, those roads would be, then you can look at, well, which road has more traffic, you know, which is, where have you seen more accidents? Where is lighting poor, so that's a bad combination, you know? Yes, so those things would be typically looked at on an annual basis in discussions between you and staff.
What do you expect your final report to be?
Given the feedback today, I can have it to you by a week from tomorrow.
So Mike, yeah, so Eddie, I presume you're in the middle of all this?
Yes.
So the challenge you have to do is deal with us as we think about priorities.
Right.
So, because we're all going to want to say, "Our road is the worst."
I understand.
And all the residents will say, "Ours is the worst." And balancing all that, it's a challenge, you know? So I would think that probably when you're comfortable, and since you're comfortable, we probably want to have a workshop on this to kind of map out what the priorities look like, what you think you got, so we can all weigh in and say, hey, we agree, disagree, and then you're going to have to sort through us and write the priorities. Does that make sense?
That does. And that's a great point, Counselor, that the selection of this method produces an unbiased ranking of roads. It's not about where they are, or how old they are, or what's been done before. It's all about how they are, you know, their condition today.
Yeah, the challenge, we just have to do whatever day you want, so they're a deep thinking.
And you're not alone in that challenge.
I know.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. We don't want to go into item F, discuss the process for an at-large appointment for board commissions and any policy implementation of the council.
So I'm thinking that some of the boards are meeting at large positions on there. I know that the person recreation would at least need two. I'm not too sure about the airport or the beautification and environment.
So all of the boards are defined by board members in terms of their size. We've not had a discussion recently on boards, including... So in the past, we've done, kind of on an annual basis, a total presentation of some boards and commissions. It doesn't matter if all the boards and commissions are. I think the point you're raising is some boards have five and it's worth finding. Some have at-large positions. While you do a workshop, take a look at it. And since I've got all the documentation about what the boards are, where they are, the limits and all that, I'd have to pull that back forward. I think we'll simply get one more schedule if you have a workshop on this discussion.
And include some of these board heads.
In the past, we've invited all the board members, because we get Toma presented by the city attorney, so all the board members are up to speed and then we can talk about it if we want to change.
The one, the animal advisory board for Ward Two, I haven't had any luck. I've not talked to quite as many people. So the idea is now to go and try to seek someone at large in the city. But can what, I'm just curious, can what advertise by radio, mass media?
Actually, there's a ordinance that was adopted by council. They do not need your ward to be able to represent your ward. So if you've got someone in Ward One that is willing to do that, or Ward Five, you don't have to stay within your actual ward to get someone to...
Article six of chapter 10 specifically talks about the animal advisory board. And yeah, we worked on that because of the points you raised. Getting people in a particular ward's a challenge, so we opened it up. They've got the board members of the city all properly. And in some cases, I don't know if we would find out, but others, we pulled out of license. And I would use, since I stay close to planning and zoning and the airport advisory board, most of the airport advisory boards have property, they are aviators, but they may already be out. So the city allowed that by itself, so I think that's possible. I'll bring that to the table.
Okay, go to item eight. Action items to be counted by group statement, bank group of twenty-one to that number. Action items included up to ten per meeting. Citizens are allowed to comment, limited to three minutes after being called upon by the mayor or mayor pro temp. Citizens are required to state their name and the ward with which they reside. Power will be given to citizens of Alpine and those who own business or property. The city individuals who do not live in or own businesses or property in the city limits of Alpine are allowed to speak if there's time available. Counselor Stevens.
Sir, thank you, Mayor. So the first item on our action list is discuss and sit and take appropriate action to hire a city manager. I put this on the agenda really with three objectives in mind. One is for us as council to have a dialogue about what we view as important for a city manager. I think the second objective is to talk about the options that we face. You know, our track record in the past to get a city manager has taken several months to occur. As we all know, we're sure we have a public works director, utilities director, finance director, or building inspector, we have an acting police chief, and we have a city secretary who is coming in way early in the morning and going home too late at night. And because she's filling all those roles and responsibilities. And so, in my mind, we have a couple of options. There are, there's certainly an individual out there who has expressed interest of coming back and willingness to be interviewed by council. If you come back, that may or may not be in our best interest, which is why, my view, I thought it worthwhile for us to have a discussion about the first. What are we looking for in a city manager to make sure all alignment? And then decide, given that, what's our appropriate course of action? Do we want to go out and advertise? Or do we want to look at a city manager who's been here before and make a decision to say, we want to go consider and pursue that individual? So with that, I thought I'd kind of throw the floor for discussion and kind of get your feedback and perspective. I'm trying to facilitate. I certainly have some opinions, but I'm but one voice. And comments, thoughts, perspective that councilors have?
Can I get a second? I'll second that.
Oh, thank you, yes.
And let's just go right down the road, starting on my left, on discussion.
Yeah, I think... Can I be last? Because I don't want to influence people.
Okay.
Yeah, I've kind of worked through this a lot.
Counselor Escuelo.
I would want somebody that's local, that we know. I think that's important. I do think we need to think about the amount of time that we're putting on having that person, you know, like the last city manager that I had here for like three years or something. Maybe we need to shorten that time. Like, you know, I know that we have, what's it, three years? You're talking about the contract? Yeah. I think we need to shorten that time, just to, you know, on the sales side.
Is anyone that's even advertised or...
If you have people that are, you know, want to hear, that want to be city manager.
Let's advertise.
Yeah, I guess, I guess, you know, how long to get it, how long?
We need to move on to A set. Because we need department heads. Our city attorney discussed a little ago, you know, that we do need to get a city attorney hired as soon as possible because they're the ones that in turn interview the department heads. And shy quite a few, so...
Mayor, the...
Yes, sir.
I've been through the hiring process for probably six or eight different city managers in different cities over the last twenty years. And if you go through a normal thoughtful hiring process for a city manager, where you advertise, you advertise a female, you may engage a stabilized search firm, you have meetings among the council, establish criteria to decide what you're looking for in a city manager. Then you get applications, you have a committee on the city council that look at applications, sort of rank them, and then you decide the top three to interview. Then you have to do background checks, then you have to do criminal checks, check out references and all that, has to be known before the interviews. And to really do that as a thoughtful process is about a six-month process to come to a thoughtful decision that's not too rapidly so that you end up cutting corners and maybe hiring somebody that you have looked at from all sides and from different areas. It takes a while. I don't get to go and hire anybody, and I'm glad I don't have to. But I can't say that just in the two weeks I've been here, I love this community. I went out by starting first waiting in Alpine. But this city is sort of like a rudder, a ship out of the storm, toss a seat because it doesn't have a city manager, it doesn't have six department heads, it doesn't have a dozen supervisors in departments that need to be hired by department heads. You can't hire the department heads unless you have a city manager. To hire the department heads, or at least recommend to the council, it comes along with that. So, you know, I'm not sure this city has the luxury of going through the six-month political process, but that's y'all's choice and I'm glad y'all have made that choice. This city sure is sort of a, I wouldn't say a hell of a mess, but it's a good city. We can come out of this and do nothing, but it needs some leadership from the city manager. Then hire some people that come in to help stabilize and provide the leadership that this hard work that the city employs needs. Two cents.
Counselor, please go.
Yeah, I think we should set up the announcement that we need one and see what happens. Doesn't have to be like the city, it could be anyone.
My recommendations would be that, considering the large workforce that we have and the amount of salaries that we're paying someone to manage that workforce for the benefit of the city and to meet all the demands of providing the best quality for the city, is that I think from an educational standpoint, we need someone on board who at least has a master's degree in city management and administration, who has proven ability to manage a multi-faceted workforce. And preferably somebody that is bilingual and with multicultural experience. Because as we know, our workforce is basically largely Hispanic and keep it in mind that the population now in Alpine is basically fifty-one percent Hispanic plus minorities. And I recommend that the announcement be through the city of Alpine, mass media, newspaper, radio, local and regional. The Texas Municipal League should also get involved. We should advertise to the website and any other Texas workforce websites. But the idea is to get the word out there, let us bring in as many, a good applicant pool, and then go through the process of rating, ranking, bring them in, let's interview, and then we select.
I think that we should advertise and do interviews, but I know we don't probably, we need to make it, make a fast decision, as fast as we can to get, you know, back on track and move forward. Is there like a firm or something that you can hire a city attorney to, or I mean a city manager?
Acting city manager.
For, just for temporary until we can find something? Isn't something that we've talked about before?
There are firms out there that certainly provide a city manager for a period of time. I think one of the challenges that we have is probably hiring someone like that when you've got senior staff positions, so that we don't have that in my mind. Certainly.
City attorney, can you say something?
I was just going to say that, I was going to, you sort of took the words out of my mouth, that there are firms both that do sort of headhunting to recommend candidates, but also that could provide a temporary city manager. But you wouldn't necessarily want a temporary city manager to be hired by the department heads. Because you want the permanent city manager to hire department heads that the permanent city manager is comfortable with. So that's one of the issues with cities facing.
I'm just curious, what happened to the street department heads that I guess were selected and offered a position by the previous city manager, they declined or what?
We never gave authority for her to offer that. She violated the city law. Remember, we had made a deal, we met, we told her she cannot.
Are they still handling?
So had, frankly, so the background checks were panning out. So we, this council hadn't had an opportunity to check that out. From my standpoint, it would have been a hard process.
So they're not considering your...
Yeah, my perspective on this, I think, has been articulated. And the concern that I have, we are stuck in a really difficult situation. In the ideal world, we'd like to go advertise and with the process, as you recall, when we selected the last city manager, we went through a hundred and six candidates. And all of those that we reviewed and interviewed, we got it down in the shortlist. You should also recall, in our shortlist, we had an individual that we wanted to select, but we could not reach agreement on salary and went after and selected the last city manager. My bias, frankly, happens to be that if there's a candidate out there that we know that we ought to go hire that individual, there's only one candidate I know that's out there and he's the one who left to go to Albuquerque, and that's Eric Zimmer. But council, and my view, I'd be very comfortable with Eric coming back on board as a city manager. He left to go to Albuquerque for personal reasons, to get his kids in school. He has expressed an interest in coming back to Alpine as a city manager because he's got his two boys off of the University of Mexico. He's certainly from Alpine. He certainly would be able to hit the ground running and start heading down a path because for those, and I don't think there was anyone on council here at the time when Eric came on board, this city could not work two hittles because they're almost bankers or financially. The news is, we've got a solid financial background in place. But that's my bias. And so I would certainly support Eric coming back on board. If the rest of the council does not support, then we have a long road ahead of us, which frankly, I think we council, I can think about how we will support a acting city manager who has no staff to be able to get that worked up. And I think that's the dilemma in this council race. Reality, no matter how fast track we move it, it's going to be between three to five months at the shores. Just think about timeline. Advertise thirty days. We council as much as we want to quickly, don't exactly have that track record. It'll take us at least another month to sort through. It'll take another month to finally do the interviews, make a decision. It'll take then a background check, and that will take another month because whoever we select, if they are a quality candidate, is going to have to leave an existing job. So my view, it's a minimum of four months, four months exercise. That's about all the subject. Anyone want to comment on that, or do we all want to go other?
Can I add my track sense to? Since we got into this situation, we've had to redo all of our vendors because the people that were the only ones that could actually call any of the admissions to make changes are no longer here. We had to actually have the institutions submit resolutions to us to be able to confirm that no one was appraising that I'm able to get on their own. I tracked the mayor down one day, three, four times, back and forth, trying to get, because we needed signatures up and running. Like I said earlier, our bank, online banking was suspended. I've had Johnny and Mike Macias in my office every single day since August seventh because we've got reports to TCEQ that have deadlines that need to be done. Mike came in to help us get me online so that we could get authorization to be able to do that. The position needs to be filled yesterday just because we're still trying to, with the vendors, our phones, to give the stuff. It almost had to be painful by hand because we could not get the process up and running fast enough because we don't have anything in place. It's been a nightmare. And thanks to the guys, you know, they've actually stepped up to the plate. I mean, I'm pulling Mike from a job, I'm pulling Johnny from a league, you know, because I need them to help me and they need me to help them to make decisions. It's been very difficult and again, we need to get someone on here, like I said yesterday. And if Eric is willing to come on board, he's familiar with our situation. He's familiar, he came in in a bad situation and put us in the black. And we're in a situation now that we do not have a single director. My human coordinator, human resources coordinator cannot even do background checks because we are waiting for the process to come in for, and I don't know if it'll be next week or the week after that. So we can't even move forward to make any offers because we don't have anyone in place to do background checks. She can't use anybody else's user making password to go in and get those generated. So my recommendation is that if Eric is willing to come, we need to take him. We're in a real bad form right now.
There's no doubt Eric was a financial guru, but I still think that we should advertise. Even though I don't have a vote in this seat. But ultimately, you know, it's up to council to decide.
Because it'll be the first of the year before we can come in and get that round.
But it's up to council to post.
You know, we have a budget that still needs to be amended, it must be adopted. We don't have a capital plan, we don't have a ton of balance. It's not fair that we're having to work off of this year's budget because we didn't complete it for next year. So it's actually impacting all of our departments.
Could we bring Eric in and have a conversation with him before we decide to hire him? Because I don't really want to vote for that right now.
Absolutely.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, my view of that would be the exact right. This is not about a decision to hire someone, Mike, this would be, once the room has been down. And, Grant, unless you want to make that motion, I'll make the motion then.
Well, you've got a motion right now.
The motion was to get into discussion, I didn't make a...
Yeah, the motion.
I think that was... So my point would be to, I'm not sure, procedural process to go through.
You can withdraw the previous motion and make a new motion.
So I will withdraw the previous motion and make a motion that city council take steps to interview Eric Zimmer as a potential candidate for the city manager position.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, now you have some folks in the back, then discussion.
Mayor and council, Oscar Cobos, Word five. I know there's a deep concern for management and everything that has caused a ripple effect and everything that has gone here and there. I heard several things tonight that are very pertinent. If it was ever posted in the email website, was ever a resolution passed in previous meetings to have it posted in the paper? How many candidates do you really have? You know, all these areas are very important. I don't know, I'm trying to think what kind of a salary Mr. Zimmer had when he was first hired, and what kind of a salary or raise the city gave him when he said, "I'm leaving, I'm residing." And what happened there is, I know he was given a raise, kept on board, then decided to leave. All these areas are very important because what happens is open the door for the community here. And you are the leaders. This is going to fall on top and all the time. And whether this, one of the things that is out there already, and this is a small community. There was on the radio, and it's all over town, probably several people that, that he's already being discussed, and that he's just already set five conditions if he's going to be hired. Well, if the public, if the city here tonight or some other night doesn't come out with those five conditions to the public, surely we're not in a smoke-filled room here with smoke and mirrors. I'd like to see transparency, what those five conditions are that he's already set. If not, I'll be filing a Texas public information request to find out what those conditions are that he's already set and he's not even on board yet. It's important that this community move forward. Yes, we need a manager, but you know, it's, I'd like to know how much, if y'all could answer some of those questions tonight, how much did he take off with as time? What kind of a package, what, how many, how much, what was the salary? And are those five conditions, let the public know tonight what those five conditions are that he's already set. And that's transparency. We're not sitting in a smoke-filled room here, thank you.
So Oscar, I may comment.
Yes, sir.
File the TPIA, because I have no idea what you're talking about. This council has never talked about anything, or ever talked about Eric Zimmer before this meeting or time.
Well, I understand that, yes, sir, but it was already announced on the radio that he's coming back already. And my understanding is, and all, he's already set conditions.
File the TPIA.
Yes, sir.
Because you're going to get nothing back.
Yes, sir.
The council, he has talked to no one.
He has talked to no one already.
And we've got no idea what we're talking about.
It'd be nice to, and you know what's, maybe just one of my better things, I know he was announced on the radio that he wants to come back. But it'd be nice to know what, if there's other candidates, other people who interviews, and the public would be aware of what's... other candidates, other people who interviews and the public would be aware of what's going on.
That's what we're talking about, whether it's advertised or not.
A little more because I know that, you know, some things, improprieties that were done and like I said earlier, his development was discussed, it was already discussed by him, his kind of way of development, a lot of, a lot of things, that's all we're asking for. And this is just for the record for the people and it'd be great to know. I'm sure he's got the expertise in some areas and y'all are in an urgent situation, but not to have the people in the dark out there saying, "What happened here? Jessica's out and he's come back? Was that the strategy?" So, you know, just to make people feel better and more at home, thank you.
Would this be the first time that a false rumor came around Alpine?
Well, I guess, well, hopefully.
On the radio.
Well, if it was on the radio, we've got, you get back to Benavich and see why it was announced that he's coming back.
Because I've never heard a thing about that.
Well, it's, we'll visit with Benavich. It was announced already, but no.
And again, I think all this is irrelevant at this point, whether he was making before or after, I mean, we're moving forward.
Yes, it's good.
And right now, putting all of our personal agendas aside, I think we need to do what's best for the city. Because Oscar, we are in a crisis.
Yes.
And we can't do anything for you or the community if we don't have all this in place.
Yes.
And there's just no way that none of us can do that. It's just not going to happen.
And now we've just had an interview with him. Okay.
It'd be great.
If there's five agendas that are on the table, we'll probably have it out there. But as of right now?
We're the leaders and we appreciate just everything in the upfront and we know we're going to move forward and we can appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Lambert.
Dave Lambert, Ward 5. Rusty, Mr. Cobos, it was announced, given news, I got to do this right here, thank you. Sorry, didn't hear it. Not with the rumor, but it does say, he said, according to Mr. Stevens, I'm just quoting what the news said, he said, former city manager Zimmer has expressed concern that he would come back, but under, only under the right circumstances. That might be wishful thought, but that's how I'm up, right?
That's all right, yep, yep.
Just trying to fix it. I'm a hundred percent against bringing back Eric Zimmer. Nothing personal, it was a neighbor, kids went to school together. Unfortunately, these kids all caught me. Brian, as he left, for whatever reasons he left, if you didn't try to stop him then, if you did, evidently didn't have enough money to keep him here. Mr. Olivas came out with the best possible solution. The taxpayer, my tax dollars, which is going to be $6,000 next year, you owe it to us. Put it out, you don't have to put it out for though. I understood what Mr. Potten had, it wasn't even an announcement for his job. But go on the whole six months, you don't have to do that. You can go one for, put one out for three weeks. Have a committee do it. City council don't have to do everything. You can have a committee sit and look at the applications to make sure that they give all your earmarks. As you say, you know, because you're controlled.
No, city council has a responsibility, my charters, to have a city manager.
Right, but they can also have a committee help. So with that, I leave it to you all to put an announcement out, bring in the right people, instead of a handpicked person, because that's what somebody wants. You had the best idea, Mr. Olivas, that is the proper way we should be doing business in this town and I think the state is watching us and so are the people that want to come here to do business. Right now, there's some businesses that are holding off to see what we do. Some are holding off to January to see what's going to happen. And it would be really nice if we did it the right way. I understand that Salas has got her hands full.
I don't know that we're going to make it till January if we don't move forward. I've had a human resource coordinator for two weeks and I still cannot get her set up for a background check.
What?
Because we need to have everything in place before we can do that.
Yeah, PD can do it. But I think you need to hire somebody to assist Salas because he's doing, how many have you got?
Six.
Hey, quit closing.
They need a background check.
And.
I mean, and Brooke's here to tell you that she hasn't, PD told her they couldn't do the background checks. DPS will not do the, I mean, she is the one that needs to do the background checks.
And that's, the thing is, if you're going to hire somebody, don't be selecting out the one person, see what's going to take you from your back. That gives us a bad eye all around and unfortunately brings back to the rumors he was just saying. That's going to make it really look like those rumors are true. Mr. Olivas has got the best one, have it forward for this city and make us stand up. If we got those department heads, it's got to be hired. You got to hire a chief of police. Bring in somebody in possibly from outside with better ideas on how to get things done, that might be the only thing. That's exactly what Presidio did and look where they're moving to. You can attest to that, Mr. Potten.
The Presidio city manager grew up in Presidio, his parents lived in Presidio, he knows Presidio.
He was gone, he came back and they fixed the city. But they did it the right way. They put an announcement out and even though that's the way it went, that's the way it went. They put an announcement out and Mr. Zimmer wants to come back, more power, but at least it's not going to be that shallow back there event. Give somebody's handpicked or the rumors that he just mentioned. Do it the right way. Turn our tax dollars into the right amount. Thanks, sir. Mr. Fuzi.
In three minutes, I'm just going to sort of read this. And this isn't anything about any particular person, it's just in general from my background. I've been a resident of Alpine and worked for, five for about thirty years, own a home and a business. From 1995 to 2001, I worked for the city of Alpine under two local city managers, both of them who had been raised in Alpine, had attended our local schools and university. Under Jerry Carver Hall, Alpine became a Texas Main Street city under Texas Historical Commissions Program of Economic Development through Historic Preservation, the only viable economic development program for a small city in Texas. This is a proven fact. Shortly thereafter, the Department of Community Development was created, for which I served as director. The department involved planning, grant writing, economic development through private, public partnerships. How much of that have we had lately? At that time, much of the downtown district was considered a blighted area. During an analysis by state inspectors as part of an earlier city plan study, under Carver Hall and later Doug Lively, in coordination with the Main Street program, a documented $8 million private-public reinvestment was made in the community, including two new hotels, a new post office built on unused city property. With the retirement of Doug Lively, all this came to a screeching halt with the hiring of an out-of-town manager. In fact, a sequence of them, one after another. Main Street was terminated. Million-dollar grant project to move the railroad crew, changing operation out of town was rejected. That was a tech stop project. We had the money, but a crooked city manager terminated and now we're stuck with these trains that are blocking our essential crossings. The termination of a comprehensive community plan that was in its final stages was also shelved. Where is our community plan now? We don't have one. What I'm seeing, in my own experiences, like Tim O'Neill once said, all politics is local. If we have a chance to immediately hire a new manager with prior successful city manager experience, plus a history of past residents and significant personal investment here, I would certainly not pass any contingency. I don't remember any other out-of-town city manager who really wanted to live here, buy a home, invest in this company, the community. Tom Longman, some of you probably remember him, local man, he did so much for this town. So it was local energy that made this happen. I'm not suggesting any particular person, I'm just saying that whoever it is, whether they're from out of town, whatever, they should have something in common with Alpine. They should have some common experience, not some village somewhere or some steel mill. This is a very special place. We have a sense of community. We need to protect that. We don't need some opportunists coming in here and ripping us off. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Mayor Council, I'm Dale Christoffersen, Ward 5. And I won't, I do have a parent's statement, but I think it'd be more efficient to not spend everyone's time if I send an email to you later and you can read it. But to follow up on what Cynthia mentioned, some of you may have gotten one of these in the mail, I got mine last Saturday. And it's a minor thing, you know, but it could be a little scary if my waters didn't show up or it was just a mistake of some kind. But, and that's a minor thing, but what Cynthia is talking about, problems the city is under and they need to get them dealt with quickly, this is just a little thing, but there are, I'm sure, all kinds of bigger things of which she's mentioned, some that are bound to fall through cracks. And that's why I really support moving quickly and if you have, if, for instance, if Eric is willing to come back, is interested, I think you need to act fast. And apart from that, I would say, having had him here with experience, you know what he did while he was here, look back at that. If you don't like it, of course, you can hire him. But I think if you look back at what he accomplished during the time he was there, you really can't be standing months and months looking for, but then, I'll give you a little more organized.
And just to elaborate on Dr. Christoffersen's little minor thing, we had to put out a PSA because our phones were ringing off, we all, with two girls up front trying to take bills and answer calls because residents were upset because they got past you. And I'm not talking, I mean, this was an ongoing thing for two days, in and out, in and out. I mean, they would hang up and pick up, right back up. And that was just a minor thing.
Yeah, I'm sure there are many, many more serious things, background checks, things that need to be dealt with fast. If you do know someone that can do it.
Okay, so I'll go with question. Motion that made, would you need to state what your, your motion you had to gather up?
It was, you made the motion to take steps to bring Eric Zimmer back for an interview with a second from Councilor Bailey, Lieutenant.
Okay. Okay, that was the motion. Okay, all who's in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, by design. Okay, motion passes. Okay. Second one, that's.
So the next one is to take the foot for action with refunding of the wastewater treatment plant of $300,000. As you recall, in our meeting, the special council that we had last year, one of the challenges is what's going on with wastewater treatment plant and a number of issues that like I said, is out there, a lot of it deals with, we need to get them the right equipment. And so I hereby make the motion to approve funding for the wastewater treatment plant of up to $300,000 to come from fiscal year 18, 19 funds for equipment and repairs necessary to ensure the system meets the requirements.
Okay, I'll suspend the second. Any discussion?
I actually asked Mike to come in here and kind of elaborate on the situation.
You're on, Mike. Yes, sir.
That's a friendly audience.
Good evening, everybody. How's everybody doing?
Good.
Questions?
So, so Mike, we had our package, you're looking for a belt press.
Yes.
That was one of the items and it ranges between $166,000 and $195,000 were the options. I believe your recommendation was the lower cost one.
Correct.
Because it comes in a trailer.
Yes, sir.
Would you do a favor and share for us, what does a belt press do and why do you need it?
Okay, yes, sir. A belt press, at the plant right now, it's so antiquated, we use drying beds, okay? And the function of a drying bed is you waste, just sludge directly into it. Of course, you're not going to tell people to stop using the toilets, so there's always going to be a continuing flow of that. So what you would do is there's media under the drying beds, about three or four feet deep, and it has sand and rock. So when you dump, when you waste sludge into it, it's supposed, in about a week's time, in theory, the sludge dries up and it looks like cornflakes. Just go with me on that. And the water goes, seeps down, goes into a junction box and then we treat the water. Okay, we have about, I don't know, eight of them, but they're just not working, they're just so old, they don't work anymore. Belt press is what they do is you, you directly put sludge, water and polymer into a, it's a press like a belt. And what it does, it presses, it compounds the sludge and it draws out the water with the polymer, the water and the polymer, it's effluent, it's called effluent, it goes into the, to the contacts where it's treated with chlorine and then, and then treated with sulfur dioxide. And the sludge comes out in a cake form, it rises about six feet tall and it's, it's like a little mound of sludge and you can actually, it's like, it's cake, it's like, it's cakey. And it's dry, you do a paint filter test, take it to the landfill and you're done with it. When I got to the plant, goodness, I would say about five years ago, we had those, those drying beds and they wouldn't operate efficiently, so it's, I've been spinning my wheels for five years. And so what you do is you wait as, as long as you can, shovel into a, to a roll-off called TDX, they would take it. I think I'm, I'm going a little bit off the subject, but I just want to inform you guys as much as possible. So that the belt press would, would absolutely be beneficial for the plant.
So as a result of the belt press, you would not need the racetrack? Is that how?
Negative, you would need the racetrack. Actually, the aerator, the racetrack, those are the two terms for the same thing. The air, it, there's three components to a aerobic plant, that's air, bacteria and the sludge, obviously. And you need to continually aerate the sludge so it cultivates the buds. So no, you would, we would do it with the drying beds.
So you do the drying beds, so I also know you need aerators out there.
That's correct.
So you need to get those as well.
Yes, sir.
And what do aerators cost nowadays?
Oh goodness, Johnny would know, what about $110?
$110, $120?
$110, $120 is about, that's a good one.
So the council approves the, up to $300,000, you would be able to get the $166,000 belt press and you would have money left over to go get an aerator to power and meet the needs.
He needs a screen as well.
A screen as well, but if I, if I had to say, one, if one could do, we could do without, it would be the screen. God bless you, I know you're trying, but I'll take it all.
I had a discussion with Jess over at the old city hall, and she found one that was refurbished for almost half of what we would pay her money. And I know that you quoted Ms. Elm's $150 on the aerator.
Correct, that's correct.
So between $120 and $150 and we need two aerators.
Yes.
Why we have now is.
It has an oil leak in it and that's the thing, Virgil Clark was with us, rest his soul, there was two aerators, one gave out, so this one has been going non-stop 24 hours a day, works on holidays and all that. So it has, it's developed an oil leak, so you have to top it off every two weeks. So that's not a good thing. One of these days, I'm going to turn it off, put oil in it, kick it back on and it's going to keep on. In approximately eight to 10 hours, your plant will become septic when it doesn't have air in it. So then it will overflow and then we have to call the NPA.
That's where their motors come, so we now, isn't it?
The motor is, but not the gearbox, you can still order those. I know Skinner, John Skinner, I don't know if I'm allowed to say, Skinner Electric ordered us a while back, I don't know if I'm allowed to say. This was maybe like three years ago, he was going to, he was going to get it all together, but it didn't pick up momentum on that.
Okay, so $170,000 plus $130,000, that's $300,000, so that's the belt press and the aerator. And how much is a screen costing?
Or $35,000, $45,000?
And the existing aerator you have out there, is it rebuildable or not?
It is, it is.
And, and do you have that within your current maintenance budget to rebuild it?
Oh gosh, I do not think so. Johnny, do we?
Okay, and, and so if council. Okay, and, and so, if council approves $350,000 tonight, you can at least get your belt press, your aerator, your bar screen taken care of. You would come back to council at some future date relative to now having a new aerator to come back with, here's what I need to go get my aerator rebuilt.
Yes, sir.
Is that a good strategy?
That is an excellent strategy. It's not a good one, it's excellent.
Okay, so, that, as background, I'd like to amend my motion.
Before you do that, we have a discussion with Mike. Mike, where are you with the electrical panel?
In regards to what?
Is it functional, is it working? My last was, that what I was told was that it was so outdated that they could not actually put it back together.
The electrical panel is old. I'm not sure as far as.
Parts, that they couldn't locate parts?
I don't, I don't know, I'm getting, picking up what you're throwing down. I know it's, it's old, but I don't, I'm sure they can, they can still manage it.
I thought they had rebuilt that panel.
For what now, sorry?
The electrical panels, or that's where Mike and you got into it?
No, that was for the solar panels, and they worked for a couple of months, and they, they're just there for a better running.
So, 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 I'd like to amend the motion to make it $300,000 for the funding coming out of the FY 18, 19 funds, that will allow procurement of the belt press, procurement of the new aerator, and the actions necessary to take care of the screen and bar screen. And that, in the future, you would come back to council with additional things that you might need, so that council can determine whether or not to appropriate a roster of employees.
That's correct.
Okay, so, my motion's over there.
One second.
And, discussion?
Yeah, discussion, good. I see no, no problem not to approve, what you need for upgrading the equipment for the water treatment plant. My question is, fiscal year 18, 19 closes in a month and a half, do we have the funding?
Yes, sir, we do.
How much?
We're going to pull it out of the reserves, and the full amount, the full amount can be pulled through.
That's interesting. Okay, so, in terms of this being an enterprise fund, last year, as we looked at, not only between gas, water, and wastewater, they had a significant underrun in gas-generated additional revenues. I recall there was about a million dollars of fund balance available. And we'll talk about that on item number three, but at some point, we are going to have to approve any of your fund balance.
I urge council to have to approve this, and I have to be active with a Band-Aid every day, and sometimes 24/7 monitoring the equipment, and it's a sorely needed. If that bank goes down, the city dies.
He takes his lunch hour out there, he goes double-checking to make sure that we're still under pressure.
For, for an extra taste, that's it.
All for the question, question been called for, ayes in favor.
Raise your right hand.
Opposed, by the sign, thank you very much, motion carries.
Mike, go on.
Cynthia, I'm proud of you, okay? I'm very proud of you, Cynthia.
I'm proud of you guys for hanging in there with me.
Okay, it's code, item number three.
So, item number three, I put on the agenda last Wednesday, expecting that we might have an opportunity, one that we might recommend we could throw this in here, 18, 19, those who are not here, I think we should, on the table, action on.
Okay, all, okay, any discussion? Ayes in favor, raise your right hand.
Okay, action on the, uh, four, let me get to that one, I thought I turned it up, I did turn it up. Uh, we have an obligation as a city council to pass a budget, and it's required that we do this by ordinance, according to our charter. And so what you have in your package under item number four is ordinance 2019-08-02. The gist of it is what we talked about at the last city council meeting, and that is in fact, to adopt an ordinance that is the same as we have for this current fiscal year, so that we're able to move forward. But there are also some additional items that are required for council to approve, and that is to appropriate money for the sinking fund, basically pay interest and principal on the city's indebtedness, and to adopt the annual budget for next fiscal year. So I'm actually going to, because of the significance of this, read this ordinance into the record. I move that we adopt ordinance 2019-08-02, and ordinance making appropriations for the support of the city of Alpine, Texas for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2019, and ending September 30, 2020, appropriating money to a sinking fund to pay interest and principal on the city's indebtedness, which as a note is $4.559, and adopting the annual budget of the city of Alpine for the fiscal year 2019, 2020. We've all had the opportunity to see the details of that, and basically all it was was taken in 2018, 19, and made into 2019, 20. Specific sections of the ordinance are, section one, that the appropriations fiscal year beginning October 1, 2019, and ending September 30, 2020, that support general value in the city of Alpine, Texas, be fixed, and the term of, or set terms and reports for the expenditure shown in the city's fiscal year 19, 20 budget copy, which we have on our desk, section two, that the budget, as shown on the words and figures in exhibit A, is approved in its all respects and adopted the city budget for fiscal year, next fiscal year, beginning October 1, 2019, and September 30, 2020, and that, section three there is hereby appropriated, not showing the set budget necessary to provide the sinking fund to provide for the payment of the principal and interest and retirement of the bond debt, and is required for fiscal year 2019, 2020, for the fiscal year, and section four, that this budget will raise more revenue to property taxes than last year's budget by an amount of $17,960, which is a 0.09% increase from last year's budget. Property tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax rule this year is $25,210, and section five, that this budget should take effect and enforce the date after its application. So that is the motion. And even though our legal obligations by doing that for the state as well as a couple of reasons, on the stage.
Motion made, second, any discussion?
Yes, the only thing I'd like to point out is, actually, a couple of things. One, in section four, you say that last year's budget, by the amount of, there will be an increase in revenue, good property taxes by $17,960, which is 9% increase from last year's budget, but in the proposed city of Alpine fiscal year 2018, 2020, where you did, it's, it's outlining the property tax rate comparison. You mentioned up here it's a 1.3, I'm going to want to look at that.
Yeah, so we got to get that collected, Cynthia, if you look at our portion.
The other thing is that, on the page regarding the combined budget summaries, we have fiscal year 2018, 2019, and for revenues and expenditures, but, and you're, we're saying we're going to use the same budget for 2018, 19, for 2018, 19, 20, whereas the combined budget for the last year's budget that was submitted and we approved, the, the actual total amount in revenue was $12,870, whereas the, now combined is only 12, total, yes, $12,568. So there's a difference, and a few thousand dollars there, and it's a big difference.
Yep. Good, good comments, good question, Cynthia.
Yes, sir.
Have you worked that?
Yes, sir.
And the one other thing I'd like to mention is the, as you look at the combined budget summaries, and if we do go with a budget year 2018, 20, and the information on the spreadsheets throughout, they don't match.
Yeah, but exactly.
Is that an example? Yes. For example, just pick the, the one up at the very top, non-departmental general in 50, in fiscal year 2018, 2019, estimated 15,000, proposed for 2019, is 2020, is again 15,000. But if you look at the revenue for, and it doesn't have a face number, so I can't give you a face number, but it says on here that the proposed for year 2020 is 65,000.
So, if you look at the original budget, I'll just use the fourth, third column from the left, says original budget year 2019, total number 65,000, proposed budget 2020, same number 65,000. The actual experience is reflected in what was spent, and what our strategy was, we said we can adopt the budget that we had in 2018, 19, or 2019, 20, so it is the same number.
I, I just brought that one up just to be quick, but going through here, I found some other discrepancies, you may want to look at it.
Okay, because this one is not a discrepancy.
Yes.
That's what I was going to point out, but there's others, Paul, may you please, because I went through as many as I could as well, but we pointed out to you something that we bring.
Just a quick look over would be good.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Ayes in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Opposed, by the sign, motion carries. And, number five, Council Stevens.
Okay, number five, as was pointed out earlier, and our acting city manager walked through that, we do not currently have a building inspector. And action number five is aimed at providing latitude for the city to be able to move forward to allow construction to occur and not slow down, provide you revenue for a number of people who live in the city until such time as a building inspector can be onboard. Resolution that you see, which is resolution 2019-08-12, walks through the elements, the key ones are that the Alpine Code of Ordinance is chapter 18, you know, documents the regulations for construction, inspection, and permits. The section 18-1 states that the official, as a county, may inspect all improvements and correct any errors, it is not a requirement to do so. Code, we want to make that evident, we don't have anyone do that, we don't want to stop construction. A section 8.2 states that no building or part of any building shall be constructed in a temporary model or altered, and no swimming pool should be constructed or altered without first attending a permit. So, we have a requirement that any construction requires a permit, and all the elements associated with that, but in the event that a city inspector is not available, it allows elements to proceed from a construction standpoint, and the provisions of the, of the resolution requires that photos of the work accomplished be presented to the Alpine Building Department by the individual company to validate that the work is evidently and properly taken error. And as a reminder to all of us, general contractors are not required to have a, a license here in the city of Alpine. However, all of the trades must. So all of the trades have to get a permit, all of the trades have to comply with their own requirements, whether it's plumbing, electrical, framing, roofing, HVAC, you name it, they have a specific code they have to comply with. So in my view, by them having to deliver photos, they are going to validate, and it's a way to get signed off that says, yeah, really, they've done the work, so that we can verify compliance, ensure safety, and I think this ordinance is one that, that just goes into effect on a temporary basis, and we can rescind it of the resolution when we get a building inspector, but it allows to occur, so. That is background. I move that the council approve resolution 2019-08-12 for the purpose of allowing compliance to building codes, ensure that the city has records of construction, the absence of building inspector, but that until such times a building inspector come onboard, contractors can continue to do that.
One second.
Okay, motion made, second, any discussion?
The only, the only question I have is, what if the contractors do not comply with photograph of the work that they're doing, and do not submit, and if something happens in the future, property damage, physical damage, who's liable?
So, I think you raise a great question. Our current ordinance doesn't even require inspection. So today, we don't even require they submit pictures. And, so, in my view, we're actually reducing our risk of liability by obligating them to require, which be validated when it comes time to close out, so you get CO, certain occupancy, what a CO's got to get done, got to have all the pictures that says, here's all the work that's been done, I actually think is an improvement, only where we are today. So I think.
Can you agree with that, Mr. Gray?
I do, I mean, it would be best if we had a building inspector that could inspect projects after a building permit is, is approved, so that you sort of make sure everything's made, not imported, but we don't have that.
Who's going to keep the pictures, who's going to keep them in a, I mean, who's going to hang on to the pictures? I'm sure they're going to be like phone, from their phones and stuff, right?
My view is going to be part of the building department. We still have a building department and a permit tech over there, so they'll be the collectors.
Just put them in file for that building.
Ideally, hopefully, you're going to be successful getting someone onboard.
You need a manager.
Yeah, but certainly, I think the key is, do we ask council to stop construction in the city?
Ken already had called from EEP, on construction. Any more discussion? Ayes in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Opposed, by the sign, motion carries. Don't take it. Item six.
Okay, item six, as you recall from our last agenda, our meeting last time, we talked about this, to establish the city council meeting dates for 2019, 2020, we tabled it because we wanted to do some homework. I know you have in your packets, the updates. One of the items was TML, the first is 9, the 11th of October, since many may be traveling, what our acting city manager has done is propose that we do it on the 1st of October and the 15th of October. The other thing I would point out is, we have two proposed dates for council meetings in December, we are only obligated by ordinance to have one meeting, and so I think we as council have to decide, do we want to do it on the 3rd and the 17th, or just do it on the 3rd. I have that personal preference that we'll do it on the 3rd, that way people have vacations or plan fan day activities, we don't have a council meeting, but that's my thought. So, with that, I would propose that we accept the dates for city council meetings as included in the package, with one item that we delete the meeting on December 17, 2019.
One second.
Okay. Motion then made, second, any discussion? Ayes in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, by the sign, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Okay, next item, I was approached by the airport advisory board, as we got a great report from them as part of the budget, I think they were one of the, in addition to the parks board, one of the most engaged when it came to us talking about a budget. And as part of the work that the airport advisory board has done, they noted that the city has received a proposal from Tex-8 Aviation that, that Tex-8 Aviation needs approval by the end of this month, or we lose the opportunity to get 90% funding from Tex-8 Aviation on three specific items. One is to, that Tex-8 Aviation would do the design for runway lighting next fiscal year at a cost of $70,000, in which the city would pay $70,000. And if you recall during our discussion, there was money that, from a budget standpoint, that the airport advisory board thought would be available. Second item is that runway 0119, if it gets rehabilitated, which is basically doing a slurry coat on the runway, it will significantly extend the life of the airport, you just heard from O'Yell on the roads, and so rather than let it continue to carry, that costs about $30,000, the city would have to pay up to $30,000. Uh, but that would be next year as well. And I think the total number that the airport advisory board had, it was in the neighborhood of thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, and the third item would not occur next fiscal year, but would occur in fiscal year twenty two, twenty-two, which is two years out, uh, that would require up to ninety thousand dollars, which we do not have in the budget. Given they've increased the fees of jet fuel, I think they'll probably raise that kind of money for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. So with that as background, uh, I propose that the city council authorize for the city of Alpine to accept the offer from Tex- dot Aviation for improvements to the Alpine Dispenser Municipal Order with Tex- dot Aviation paying nine percent of the cost and the city of Alpine paying, paying ten percent of the cost, the total value being about one point three million dollars, in which the city will only have to pay ten percent.
I'll take that.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
So for fiscal year twenty, we will be obligated for seven thousand and fiscal year twenty, thirty, thirty thousand.
Thirty-seven thousand, yes, sir.
Thirty-seven thousand total.
Yes.
Uh, is it budgeted?
Uh, they had that in the number in the unfunded, in the end of year fund balance. My view, and you raise a great question alone until we understand that if your fund, fund balance are tough, I think our position ought to be we ought to accept the proposal. And then if we find we don't have enough money, we can decline it. But if we don't accept it, we will lose out on the budget.
And they need those lights reset.
Oh, they did, yeah. As long as it's landing without lights, the airport council.
It's good to put away your light like that.
Yeah, I just try those lights now.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, all was favoritism. Page your right hand. Those like sign motion carries. They get lights.
In fiscal year twenty-two.
Yeah, just so every year. Item number eight.
So, uh, and, uh, item number eight, uh, was to approve the first and final reading of the application for the plat, of, uh, the project that we, uh, we got a number of comments on with all the details associated with it. Is the developer here? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Engineers?
Engineers, sir.
Yeah.
Wait a minute.
So, so in order to get the discussion going, uh, I'm gonna propose that we, uh, take action to approve the plat for the Letchugula project. Property owner is five point four seven five acre tract, land in south section one oh one, block nine. GNH and S A Railway Company, certain that will be out of the ten point one six acre tract, line described in book ten, page four seventy-two, being all of the one acre tract, line described in book three twenty-four, video one sixty-four, board reported among the official public records of Bristol County, Texas. Property owner is Skyway Nerdus. So that's the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made.
Now we have the discussion.
Yes.
So, uh, the engineer for the project is here, uh, chaired council. And I went over the proposed plat with him this afternoon. And also, uh, the interim city manager participated as part of that meeting. And it's, it was, uh, clear that the, the proposal doesn't necessarily meet all of the code departments because it doesn't include some important items such as whether or not the developers have paved a bunch of history, which is the main street that enters into that development from hour one eighteen. There's a little piece of, the end of, of Letchugia Street, maybe a hundred feet from one eighteen where their property begins, that is owned by another owner.
Two private parties.
And so I, I may confirm that that is actually dedicated to the husband. If they're gonna agree to pave their part of that street. And, uh, the issue of, uh, drainage, I believe, it's, it's been addressed by their engineering on the plat, with that basic acreage. And, uh, I want Alpine to have more low income housing. I want this project to succeed, but I need more time to review these matters and make sure that I can tell the council when that plat is coming to be approved for approval, that they will agree to pave the street, that we have a dedicated right of way, that the right of way includes the two adjacent landowners that get out, let that road go out to one eighteen, and that there is adequate drainage for the project. And I can't tell you all that right now. So my recommendation is that the, I had to be tabled to be involved. Actually, I believe that these matters can be addressed and, uh, presumably approved by the product. But, uh, if we weren't right or ready for that tonight.
Right.
But I'll, I'll let the engineer speak too. I think four fellow, he's, he's not the developer. He came here from a class.
Good evening, members of the council. My name's Alex Valenzuela, uh, with the engineering firm that put together a design for this project. So I, I guess I'll start addressing the drainage part. I think that was a big concern for people who think. Um, as far as the drainage, all of the development will be captured onsite. So there's an onsite retention pond. So as far as flooding goes, for the, the properties downstream of the property, they don't have to worry about the drainage or the property being by access to rivers downstream. That's all captured onsite. As far as the, the flooding goes, it is in a flood zone. Uh, we knew that and we had to do a flood analysis using the FUMO maps. FUMO maps were a little hard to, to work with because they're, of their, um, date. But we were able to work with the surveyor, uh, we got a base flood elevation. And in order for the property to be insured, it has to be a foot above, above the base flood elevation. And that requirement was met already. The plans were reviewed and we were permitted, so the plan, so we're kind of a little bit out of sequence. The plans were approved, um, so this whole process, it was, the property was admixed. We were reassumed, um, we proceeded with the proven plans, those got approved, we got permitted. The reason we came back with the plat was because we wanted to dedicate that portion along Letchugia to the city of Alpine. And we, we did discuss with the previous city manager, we had a meeting, it was the developer, city manager. Uh, we got together to discuss the improvements along the, uh, the road, Letchugia. The, the developer wasn't trying to shy away from, from coordinating with the city on what the improvements were gonna be required for that road. But those, those conversations were put to a stop. And the reason for that being what, uh, the, the city attorney has brought up, that there's other owners that, that own a portion of Letchugia. And so at the time when we met, um, that there is, there is a legal access to it. There is a sixty-foot access easement along Letchugia. So that's what gives us access to the property. And those private owners can't take away that easement because it's recorded. They only, I guess, the conversation was the improvements, uh, is that gonna be paved or not? And at the time with the previous city manager, that got put on hold because, um, the city had to undergo the conversation with those owners to see if they were willing to dedicate that to the city of Alpine. And then at that point move forward. But as far as the stage where the, this project was at, it made no sense to have a road that was gravel. Then you have some asphalt, and then you have some more gravel. And that's why those improvements were left on hold. Um, and I think up to this point, we still don't have, um, coordination with those adjacent property owners. So it's.
It's on behalf of the city, I'll, I'll take responsibility to coordinate with them. And because that road can only become a viable road, uh, as part of the city road network if we have a dedicated, uh, assignment to the city of those roads by all the property owners.
I know one of the private owners is willing to make that assignment.
I'm sure he is.
Yeah, and, uh, but you're doing exactly the right thing. I, I think the other question we want to ask ourselves, and we heard from the citizen earlier, Harrison does not go into Letchugia right now and.
It's not proposed to go cut through.
Thank you.
So it's, it's, the way it's, the way the plan is proposed, your cul-de-sac will remain a cul-de-sac. That road won't go into this subdivision, so you'll still have a dead end cul-de-sac and a fence. And then Letchugia on the other side of the fence will be paved, but it'll only be accessed from one eighteen.
So what will they do though if they raise the level of that, of the ground? I mean, the waters, how's that gonna work?
All the water, all the water on this side is gonna remain on the site. It's all gonna drain into a drainage pond on the site.
Okay, my question is, they're, they're building a swell around the property to divert all the water into retention pond. Is this retention pond gonna be treated? For mosquitoes, bugs, every other critter? It's gonna be sixty feet from my house. So why are you not gonna treat this plant, this water retention pond? What are we gonna do about mosquitoes in our area?
We typically don't, uh, provide, I mean, we typically don't provide, as the engineers, we don't provide, uh, any treatment for the pond water. But I, I think that's.
So what's the pervert rate? Normally, in terms of ponds, your size of pond is determined by percolation rate. Have you all done the analysis to know? Cause the question that's raised is, how long will the water be there with your water flow requirements?
So that, we, we did have a geotechnical report. We had a slow study done before we proceeded the design. Um, and then the pond sizing was determined off of a hundred-year storm. So that's what we designed to, that's what we typically designed to in, in El Paso standards, which are pretty good standards to follow. The percolation here is a little bit sore because you have more clay soil. But again, the pond has been designed to capture a hundred-year storm. There, I can't say that the percolation is gonna be as fast as something we would see some, like in El Paso where we have more sandy soil, but again, that's, it's kind of part of the whole. As it is right now, if, when you have your, uh, the existing terrain, there's, there's a flooding. I mean, it's kind of an issue that you kind of have to deal with in, in the environment that you're in.
True, but it's not a retention pond. Yes, we get some flooding there, right beside my house and all the neighbors. But if you're gonna move your water away, you know there's a problem. But why are you not gonna treat this pond for mosquitoes or anything else?
I, I wouldn't be able to answer at that point because that's, obviously treatment involves money.
Right, you should have answered that.
You probably have a couple approaches. One is treatment, the other is aeration.
Correct.
So my view, and, and thanks for thinking on this, it probably would look well to include that as part of the discussion, to make sure the residents out there understand what the implications are. Aeration will resolve the mosquito issue, particularly when water has come in, then it's gonna, gonna dry on out. Uh, and you may, my views, you probably think hard on that. I, I think the other thing that I know from, I'm not sure where the rest of council is, but from my perspective, uh, I, I think we really want to understand the plan for, cause we've not seen any plans. And so interested in wastewater transfer. If you have a riding station, pump station, how it's gonna go work. The question's been raised about water. We, from a city standpoint, have to understand what the water requirements are gonna be over there, what size line. We have an obligation to deliver thirty-five psi to every meter in the city. So, and we are lodging in some cases, we know that's a challenge there, so it'd be, it'd be helpful for us.
The, the proposal from the developer is to, uh, have a water tap into the six-inch line that's near that cul-de-sac, but have two water storage tanks there and have their own water distribution system within the development. And pumps, there are waters from those storage tanks, so that they're not relying on the city for pressure. And so the, the city water department tells me there's adequate volume of water in that area, just not enough pressure. But the plan is not gonna reduce y'all's pressure because it's not gonna use your pressure to pressurize the developer. And then as far as the wastewater plan, it was to tap into the city sewer line there, but have a pump station to, to deliver it, to, to waste from that area back into the city system. So, uh, both of those appear to mainly add, uh, solutions to the issues.
Yes, sir. Randy?
I have a question. I've been kind of meeting back and forth with, I can't remember his name right now. I know we're supposed to meet, Alex, Alex. I know we're supposed to meet tomorrow at eleven. He has told me that on the proposed, that we will be providing everything, meaning natural gas. Who approved that? Customer, customer lines, meters going to the apartments?
I'm guessing the discussion was when they first met with the developer and the engineer and the previous city manager.
So did we have, do we have money in the budget to provide that for?
No.
We haven't seen anything. We weren't included in that.
That's, that's why I want to make sure that when this comes back to the council, that all the issues of who's paying for what, and that the developers were paying for the improvements is in writing and brought to the council.
Yeah, as, as I recall from council, what we were told was developers paying for everything. This is kind of a turnkey operation for us. And that we were not gonna have out of, out of pocket additional infrastructure that the developer could put all that in.
Well, again, Alex is just the engineer.
Oh, no, you're.
With all due respect, um, I, I, as far as the improvements go, the, the city does have the permitted set. So those can, I'm sure can be shared with you all. And the last thing that I recall is that's the city and the developer are gonna coordinate on how they were gonna share costs. Because the, the first item that had ever come up was the, the water pressure issue. And the developer chose to add a booster pump on his side of the property. But, um, I, I guess I just feel like a lot of the questions being brought up have to do more with the improvements than rather than the plat. And so that is, I say respectfully, just one initial.
But your, your plan is fine. I just want to make sure that the issue of the improvements complying with code and that the developer agreeing to pay for the improvements is, is in writing before the final plan is presented to the council.
Sorry, wait a minute. I was just gonna make a last note. I spoke to the developer before coming to this meeting. He will be here tomorrow. If this city secretary and city attorney would like to meet with him to discuss any of these items, especially the items having to do with finances, probably tomorrow would be a good time. So just wanted to throw that out.
Okay, so.
With that, I would amend the motion that we tabled, action that under eight, so the issues that we discussed are resolved.